Ladies and gentlemen, I call the 24 January Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order on this wonderful evening in King William County. May I would you call their role please?
Yeah.
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 Here. If we could all please rise for a moment of silence, board members, does anybody have any special?
Um, Coach Hill's not here tonight, but his mother, Etta, who was a regular in this audience, passed away recently, so if any one gets spare thought for Etta and her family, that'd be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, is that the coach calling the quiet out there?
Sounds like. Oh, we have an amended agenda this evening. Anyone have any questions regarding?
No, it looks like we've already got it covered to where they'll be at first, alright. And I'll make a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Second. Motion made, properly seconded, Ms. Branch.
Alright.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now. On behalf of the board, it's a very privilege to be able to honor the 2021 Virginia High School League State Football Class II Champions, our very own King William Cavaliers. With a resolution this evening designating such. I just want to mention, if you can hear me out there, you have three proud board members here tonight, Mr. Garber, class of seventy-four. Myself, class of seventy-five, Mr. Miskowski, class of two thousand and four. If the board would like to join me up front, Mr. Ashcraft, if you please escort the champions to the boardroom.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the school board, Dr. White, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor to introduce to you the coaches, the players, the cheerleaders, and the support staff from King William High School. The 2021 Class II Virginia High School Football Champions.
Wish I see everybody. Make sure everybody can see me.
Wish we'd see.
You gotta wait right here. Like see, yeah, there you go. And, and, uh, yeah, come over this way. Stay the rest, come, come this way over this, the board there.
Alright.
There we go, just move it. Alright, I'm, alright, that's what's good, I will take several steps. Oh, yes, oh, wow. Everybody, make sure we get up and sit one like right now, well, where is it? One, two, three. Yeah, let's do it now. Alright, let's do it again, let's do it again. One, two, three.
It don't do, it must be done because it here, it don't do.
Alright, and, and, uh. Hi, you wanna do, hey, what's up, one?
Thank y'all very much.
Oh, you're doing good, okay, alright, that's, that's stay in place. Y'all stay in place, stay in place for a minute. Well, they're all, they're here now. Everybody hear me? I'd like to ask Travis Miskowski, if you didn't know, he was with the last state championship, class of two thousand. Uh, he will be presenting the resolution and reading it for Coach Moore.
This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of King William County, Virginia, honoring the King William High School Cavaliers Football Team on winning the Virginia High School League Class II State Championship Title. Whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors commends exceptional athletic achievement and gives special honor and commendation to those athletic teams who pursue such excellence that they become examples for the youth of this county. And whereas the King William County High School Cavaliers Football Team achieves such excellence on December eleventh, twenty twenty-one, when they defeated Graham High School forty-eight to twenty-one to win the twenty twenty-one VHSL Class II State Championship at Salem City Stadium in Salem, Virginia, thereby earning their first state championship title since two thousand. And whereas each member of the King William High School Football Team is an excellent young athlete, and together they have demonstrated remarkable energy, enthusiasm, and dedication in the pursuit of their goals. And whereas the Cavaliers' outstanding success is due largely to the guidance of their coach, Scott Moore, and his coaching staff in leading the team to victory. Coach Moore not only helped his players develop their talents to the fullest, but also instilled in them a valuable sense of determination, discipline, hard work, perseverance, and camaraderie. And whereas the board also recognizes the valuable contributions of the team's overall success made by the King William High School Cheerleading Squad, as well as by staff, students, parents, and the King William community as a whole. And whereas an educational system that seeks, seeks to teach the future leaders of our county, state, and nation the fundamentals of self-reliance and the rewards of individual and group effort, athletic competition has become a valuable tool. Through their participation in sports, the members of the King William High School Cavaliers Football Team have learned lessons of good sportsmanship that will undoubtedly be of great benefit to them throughout their lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the King William County Board of Supervisors, both individually and collectively hereby commend and congratulate the King William High School Cavaliers Football Team upon its twenty twenty-one VHSL Class II State Championship triumph. And congratulate each member of the team, head coach Scott Moore and his staff, principal Corin McConville, and the entire King William High School community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution expressing the sense of this Board of Supervisors shall be conveyed to King William High School and shall be spread upon the meeting minutes of said Board of Supervisors. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, congratulations again, job well done. Who gets to play again next year? Alright, good luck.
Alright.
Thank you.
Nope, I've got enough of my own, must clean up right now, they can make their own. For sure, because it was a pretty hard hit, we were pretty much stripped from the roof.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to continue with the agenda. We're gonna open up the public comment period. Just a reminder for individuals, it's a maximum of three minutes, for groups, five minutes. Please state your name and your district. Go ahead and open public comments. And you may take, you may take your mask off while you're at the podium.
I was wondering, okay, um, my name is Civil Rose, I live at thirty-six fifty-six Custis Mill Pond Road. Um, I've been a resident of King William for about twenty years. I currently own three homes on four hundred and fifty acres. I'm here to discuss the new kennel license setbacks. What I've copied for you is a copy of my survey and my neighbor's survey. The current ordinance and the former ordinance. Um, they refer to different things like setbacks from roads and property lines, but what they do not consider at all is I have a private right-of-way across the corner of my neighbor's property. So about ten years ago, he built a dog kennel about twelve inches from my right-of-way. And because the kennel description is five or more dogs, he had four. And believe me, four dogs twelve inches from a driveway can be extremely annoying. They're also in front of my house, so they bark when I'm on my porch, when I'm in my driveway, when I go to the mailbox, when I don't go to the mailbox, when the wind blows, when the wind doesn't blow. Believe me, four dogs can be extremely annoying in addition to the feces and the flies and the smell in the summertime. I've made multiple complaints, um, recently, um, most recently back in October. Animal Control has gone out there and talked about the noise ordinance, which is section ten ninety-six. And I'll read to you, this section does not, shall not apply to any animal located on property five acres or more. So my neighbor is exempt from any noise ordinance. Five years ago, he went to five dogs, but when inspections were done, the dogs were moved, and then after inspections, the dogs came back. Currently has, I don't know, ten or twelve dogs, and now a second kennel. But because the new ordinance changed from two hundred to a hundred foot setback, he's being allowed to go by the new ordinance. This puts the dogs fifty feet from my driveway instead of a hundred and fifty feet. I can go on about the annoyances of this, but I just know that selling my house is going to be difficult. Because if anyone looks at my house with a pack of dogs that are barking off and on almost all day and all night, and a house that doesn't have them. It's, it's a serious impediment to sell in my house. So, um, I'd like for you all to reconsider the setback. Certainly a hundred feet isn't much when you can hear these dogs a half a mile away. Especially in the winter after the leaves fall. Um, do any of you all have any questions?
It's just your public comment now.
Well, so, Ms. Rose, I'm, I'm happy to ask. Have you approached the neighbor about this, is, is this?
Oh, yes, many times. I've told him to move the dogs over by his house, but he says the county allows them, so he's gonna do what he can to keep them away from his house and by mine.
And he's just in a posture of wanting to aggravate.
Um, that and the fact that he doesn't have to put them by his house if the county allows him to put them by mine. So.
I'm happy to discuss this with you further, you know, if you want to email the call tomorrow, we can.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to come up with public comment? And anyone online as much? Okay, with that, close the public comment period. Gentlemen, moving to the consent agenda, any questions or corrections, comments? There being none, if I could get a motion to approve. Properly motion and seconded, Ms. Branch.
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
On our public hearing, I think it's proper now, ordinance one days twenty-two, I make a motion that we table that.
Second.
For the, uh, to go through the process, going back through, it didn't go through the planning commission. For the amend, for the amendment.
Any discussion? Mr. McRoberts, do you have any comments in this?
No, no, unfortunately, uh, in order, there's just a whole bunch of stair steps. One is, in order to grant a CUP for townhouses, yeah, you have to not only get the CUP to allow the townhouses, but you have to have the underlying zoning correct as well. The underlying zoning would be correct, except that there's this old proffer that says that they're gonna build apartments and not townhouses, and there's this pretty picture of what the town, the apartments are gonna look like. So that needs to be fixed. In order to do a proper amendment by law, it has to go to the planning commission, and that includes the proper notices and, and, and advertising. So that process just has not happened yet, and it needs to happen, so. Tabling would be the right answer right now.
Any other comments? Ms. Branch?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. And I'm sure the planning commissioner will take every effort to accelerate that as much as possible. Okay, moving into new business. We have Mrs. Karen Carina Funkhauser, Commissioner of Revenue. An update on the real estate assessment.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Last year, I received four requests for the two thousand twenty-one land books from national companies like Zillow. My office charged fifty-five dollars for, and the books were either emailed or sent via link or web download. When I first started, I was overwhelmed, and since that's what was done in the past, I continued with the status quo. In December, I received an inquiry about the cost of the two thousand twenty-two land books. I emailed all the commissioner revenues and asked how they handled requests for the land books. Some offices charged me and some posted the land books on the county's website. After checking with Mr. Wolf that adding these large files would not overwhelm our life, or overwhelm the land site, website, I had Mrs. Branch and the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty-one land books in PDF format to the county's website. When the two thousand twenty-two land books are complete, I'll post them and remove the two thousand nineteen land books. So now someone doesn't have to go to the courthouse to look at their land book, they can just go online and look at three yards of land books. But once the problems with admins are resolved and I have more time to work with Vision, I will be able to produce numerous reports in numerous formats. FOIA does not require me to produce documents or reports that do not already exist. However, I would like to be responsive and provide good customer service. In Vision, I create a report from Mr. Garber showing the number of parcels that had dwelling. If I receive a request from outside the county, an outside agency in the county, for the books to be sent in a web download or a different format, or a, you know, a report for like all the parcels over twenty acres in this neighborhood or this district. I need guidance on whether an ordinance needs to be passed so I can charge a fee, because this would, you know, take some time. You know, if it was the EDA asking, then I would just do it, or a board member would do it, but if it's outside the county and, you know, commercial, you know, a for-profit business that wants this information. Yeah, I don't know how much time I should take to answer those requests. On January fourth, um, my office received a request by a Realtor for the property cards for the twenty-two parcels they had at two point nine million dollars owned by the city of Newport News. The Realtor had been awarded a contract to sell the parcels. I thought the amount was low, in my presentation to the board in June two thousand twenty-one. I reported that, to the board, that Newport News owned three point seven million dollars worth of property. So I emailed the Realtor back, and they said, what about these two properties that weren't included in your list? And she responded, um, that she thought those contract, those properties might already be under contract. If three point seven million dollars worth of real estate is added back to the tax rolls, real estate tax revenue would increase by thirty-two thousand dollars a year. So that could be really good for the county. On September twenty-seventh, two thousand one, I informed the Board of Supervisors about the problems my office was having with the new admin software. I followed up on September twenty-eighth with a memo to the board and Mr. Hodges outlining these problems. On November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, I informed the board that about the problems my office was still experiencing with the new software. And on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, in the boardroom with Mr. Ashcraft, Mr. Miss Journaline, Mr. Hodgens, and Ms. Bancroft, I reported these problems still persisted. Last Friday, or on January fourteenth, I received an email from Brian Admins, Brian Ann Adams, with Admins. That he, that Admins had received other complaints about the DMV downloads with their system, and that it may or may not be fixed. After, in response to the negative publicity about the admin software, software reporting the title of review. By then, only the company scheduled a conference call for last Friday afternoon. The DMV download problem was brought to his attention, but there was still no promise to fix the problem. And, and four months ago, Admins had told me that the DMV download problem would not be fixed. I would not have seven months of DMV downloads to do manually, to manually enter, plus a year, the year on download. At this point, I am still unable to produce a two thousand twenty-two land book. And the last vision to Admin's export newly created parcels were still not being created in Admin's. And the assessed value at a three of eleven new dwellings that were assessed in Vision did not transfer into Admin's. Since Bright has refused to help extract the assessment data from our server, I have no solution right now on correcting the values envisioned so the two thousand twenty-two land books can be created.
So far, is extracting that information?
Yes.
It was a mention made that maybe Travis Wolf was gonna try his, his, has any of that happened?
I haven't been informed that he has.
Any input from our side of the house on solutions we're, we're tracking right now?
Members of the board, I, the conference call we had Friday, I thought was very positive with it. It may come a little later than, than what maybe it should have had, but to get the owner of the system, he understands the sense of urgency in which we're under. The, uh, the IT director has, uh, worked with both the commissioner and the treasurer to try to troubleshoot to the extent that his knowledge will allow him to do that. And then once he, he's incapable of providing any help, then he does reach out and, and tries to get an appropriate response and a timely response. Admittedly, there's a, uh, there's an opportunity for both sides, I think, to improve the way we work. It's getting the employees more comfortable with using the system, and it's certainly getting the vendor, who is Edmund. More understanding of what the needs are, and I know the commissioner has been very clear in making her requests, and, uh. It's, it's frustrating to some extent, but at the same time, I think we have made some progress. Uh, I think just two months ago, there wasn't much talking going on between the vendor and, and, and the parties involved, which includes the treasurer, which includes our finance folks. And we'll continue to, to do that. Now, as far as charging for the, for the document, uh, I don't know if that's something that she has the authority to do, or whether the ordinance, an ordinance would have to be established for her to be able to, once the land book is completed.
And it's not something I can do right now. But by next year, if someone, you know, Zillow wanted to know all the residential properties between two hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred thousand dollars, I could run a report. But why should I do that for Zillow? They don't live here in the county, and so why would I take my time to do that, even though I could?
Are they in the state of Virginia?
What?
Whoever's requesting this, are they in the state of Virginia?
I mean, I know, I just.
That's hypothetical, but.
Yeah, I mean, so there are things I can do and I would like to do, because, you know, it helps the county, but then I only have a limited amount of time too. Like I said, if it's the EDA asking for something, or a board member asking for something, or financing for something, of course I would do it. But there's a lot of things that Vision can do. So.
Maybe we ask for routine updates from you, if not before us, then, you know, simple report.
Yeah. Alrighty.
If we could ask for routine updates, I think the next one is February fourteenth. To get a routine update from what's going on with Edmonds and.
Oh, you want to know what's going on with Edmonds?
Well, I, you've been doing a fine job of giving.
I mean, I've been telling you, I mean, we did have this, you know, conference call, but I still have no answer. The DMV, if they're gonna be able to change this one screen so I can edit and not have to like completely go onto the system and re-put in like, you know, re-log on to the account and make the change then. I mean, it's an extra step, and we have hundreds of downloads to do, going in and out of, you know, accounts twice, it's just very time consuming.
Understand, we just want to make sure that we're giving you every, whatever support you need to get through this. So just knowing what's going on routinely would be very help, very helpful. Unfortunately, February fourteenth is Valentine's Day, so we don't want to take you away from any.
Right, but I talked to you about getting the assessment data. Right, but I talked to you about getting the assessment data for land and dwellings and outbuildings. From the server from Bright and then having that uploaded into Vision.
Yes.
And that's going nowhere because Bright refused to help.
Is it a matter of money?
No, I said that, I said, and the owner of Bright, I guess, is on his farm and he's like, we're not helping you. You don't have our, you know, sister anymore, we're not helping you.
We bought the system again, couldn't we? I mean, it's not a matter of money, but if we bought the system again, then we could get all the information we needed.
They were trying to negotiate with Bright just to have the system for another six months instead of a year and they said, no, it's a whole year or nothing.
So how much would that pay?
I, I don't know.
I mean, it sounds like there are ways we can get around it and can we get a, a positive date from DMV or Edmunds guy? I mean, she sounds like the same that we're.
And I sent him a screen and there's one field that I want changed.
How about this? Can, can we get Mr. Edmunds who was on the phone on Friday here in front of us one night? Let's, let's give that a shot. I think we've, as the board here, we're getting our feet held to the fire or something we have absolutely nothing to do with, all right? We didn't select this system, you know, the county staff selected this system and county staff have predated you two sitting in a chair right there in, in leadership positions for sure. And you, in your position as well, you know, we were told this is the system we want. We authorize the money to get the system, the system's not working. I want to know why it's not working and I want somebody to tell me why I've got the Commissioner of Revenue in front of me every month telling me it's not working. It's, it's frustrating to us to then have negative reports in the newspaper pointing fingers at us or people out in the public pointing fingers at us. When I didn't select the day on system. I had nothing to do with the selection of this system or the implementation of this system. I don't know a thing about software development, okay? I, I'm a mechanic, all right, and a business manager. So I'm in the same position that all of you guys are in when I pay for software, I expect it to work. And if it doesn't work, I hold my vendor account. So I would like the opportunity to hold this vendor account.
I mean, I'm not bringing these problems to your attention to make the board look bad. I'm bringing to your attention, they need to be solved. I cannot print the land book. If I cannot print the land book, you cannot issue real estate bills. If you can't issue real estate bills, you're gonna have to cut your budget by forty-six percent.
Right.
I mean, so it's not like I'm bringing this to your attention because I want to make everyone look bad, I want it fixed.
I get that and I get that and this isn't a criticism of you, this isn't a criticism of, of, of staff here. It's maybe a criticism of the vendor, I, I don't know, I want some answers from, from this vendor who I get to hear about every month. Or get to read about what a bad job we did with this vendor when I had nothing to do it. So if I'm going to be held accountable for it, I want the opportunity to hold the vendor account.
I mean, I agree, September twenty-eighth, I brought it to Edmunds' attention, the DMV download is not working. I have to wait until January fourteenth for them to respond and say, oh yeah, other people complained, we may or may not fix it.
I get it, I would accept that from my shop management software, I wouldn't accept that from, from any piece of software that I rely on to do business.
I understand from historically, since we purchased this and we're not the only ones that bought it, are we the only ones having a problem with DMV?
Urbana and Kilmarne use the system, but they don't assess personal property. So they don't have the same, the DMV download issues that we do. Essex has admins, but they implemented later than we did. And they have their own set of issues with admins that they're kind, they're doing double entry. They don't have a problem with the export from Vision to admins because they're entering everything twice. Which they, once they got it in October, they knew to do. Well, we got it in July and we didn't know to double entry and so three months later, hundreds of transactions, how do I go back and fix that? I don't know.
Are you saying that Essex just started using theirs?
They started using admins after we did.
In October.
Yeah, like, so it was like, we got it.
A while because I remember when.
Well, I know, I know when I was.
I mean, the Commissioner of Revenue Office, that other parts of Essex County might have been using it longer.
Shortly after I was sworn in, I asked the then Commissioner of Revenue Sally Pearson. And Harry Witt, the then Treasurer. And both of them said, these localities have it and we're having problems. But Essex was one of them. So this was back in twenty nineteen, so are we saying that they just started using it in October?
My talk with Tommy Blackwell regularly, he's the Commissioner of Revenue for Essex because he is my mentor as a new Commissioner. And they, like this summer, early fall, they started using it, but they didn't. You know, they're just getting into it like we are. I mean, other parts of Essex County might have been using it because our finance department was using admins much sooner than the Treasurer and the Commissioner's office was.
So, so the contract that we have with them, is it any period of time that they troubleshoot? I still haven't seen that contract. So were they obligated at all at this point in time or?
I, I don't know, I requested that the board show the contract to the attorney and see if we had any recourse.
Stephen, was that a no or were you saying I love that long path? Yeah, that's what I thought, that's why we moved into always put in a help desk, they get to call them up and talk through the problem. And Essex is the only other county?
No, like I know that Kilmarne and Urbana use admins, but they don't assess personal property and they don't assess the land. That still comes from. The only one I know is Essex. I, I mean, I can send out an email to all the commissioners and find out who else is using it and what kind of issues that they have.
That you would like to know, I mean, I don't want to take a lot of time, but. It's gotta be, if anybody else has this, they've gotta have a problem or it's our problem for DMV.
And I can forward you the email from January fourteen from Brian Admins, other people have this problem. You know, we're looking at, we'll put in production, see what happens.
We'd probably like to have that letter here when, if he appears.
Just, just a question, what is the manual, is there a manual solution given that we're not going to get an update? Can this be done manually? I understand labor hours and all that, it's, it's not realistic, but it can be done manually.
It can be done manually, but you know, now if I known four months ago, I could have, I wouldn't be seven months behind. And now I have the annual download also.
Didn't you say that, I think it was Essex, that they can enter it twice?
Well, they do that for real estate. When they make a change of the ownership on a, you know, piece of land, they entered in Vision, then they entered in Admins. They create a new parcel, they create a vision and then they do the same thing in Admins. But they've been doing that since they. You started using admins. I didn't know that Vision to Admins export was going to be a problem and that I would need to do that.
I just have one question too, Mr. Chairman. If we were told that the Bright system was obsolete and it was going under, it sounds like it's still around. Is there any way we can find out if the Bright system? We were told it was a dinosaur, it doesn't work anymore, but it seems like everybody loves Bright and it's still there if we pay for it. So could we go back to Bright and fix everything? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, now I don't know how we would get all our information from Vision and Admins back into Bright. It's, a lot of the problems we have is the conversion from one system to another. So that is a lot, and things that could be fixed in Admins. You know, they wait four months to tell you too bad. And that I don't think is acceptable. So.
Mr. Chairman. We, we need to have an Edmonds meeting, yes, okay? At that meeting, I would like to know, who else uses Edmonds?
I can find, I can email on the Commissioner of Revenue tomorrow and say who else uses Admins.
I want to know who of those users of Edmonds are having the same problems that we're having? Are they all having the same problems? Are they having different problems? Because we need to know if this is an issue with the implementation of our, of our, of our own software that we need to go back and fix. Or is this a broader issue with the platform in general? What solutions is Edmonds offering and when? And then what alternatives exist? What alternatives exist?
Would you be willing to entertain a special meeting for that?
We may have to, because I know we, you know, we'll be in the budget here.
This can delay too much longer.
So I, I'd like to see if we can get Mr. Edmonds here to, to talk to us about these and other issues and answer those questions. Because I'm getting sick of hearing about it and we're the ones that control the money going to them. So. He should come talk to us.
What are other departments in, in the county?
Pardon?
What other departments in the county uses the, the system?
I think the whole county uses admins, like the finance department, the building permits uses admins, the school board uses admins. Am I wrong? I think everybody.
Everybody else having a problem?
Well, it. Early on, early on, early on, when I spoke to Mrs. Pearson and Mr. Witt, both of them told me. That it would be ideal for finance. And they predicted that it was going to be problems, you know, but, you know, that was a different set of individuals.
I mean, I know like with the building permit. And Bright, they entered like four bedrooms, three bathrooms, one half bathroom. But now there's no fields and admins for those permits and Betty types that all in individually. Which is just more time consuming. But you know, when you send out the assessor to assess a new house, you need to know how many bedrooms and how many bathrooms it has and how many half bathrooms. So she has to enter that all manually.
It boggles the mind that it's twenty twenty-two and I'm having to deal with software that won't work. So I, we need to get this fixed and I want this to be outside of budget.
Mr. Ashcraft, please keep us up to date on efforts. Thank you, Ms. Funkhauser.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on, we have Mr. Tom Sodrianian, Financial Overview and Capital Needs.
Good evening. I don't know if you guys want to ask me any questions since coming right behind Karina. If there are any questions from me, from, that you have for me about Edmonds, feel free to ask while I'm up here.
I'm fine with letting her do her, her presentation first and then we can circle around and see if we've got.
Really? Come back to it, huh?
Or would you rather do it now? What's your question?
I mean, since it's fresh on your mind, I, I really, if you guys want to ask the question, I know you guys, because I'm going to get ready to throw out a lot of numbers to you.
Is it working for finance? Is Edmunds working for finance?
Edmunds is working well for finance. I do want to point out school board. Stacy Longus was amazing dealing with Edmonds. She is the second school board to go on Edmunds in the state of Virginia. Colonial Beach was the first and then Stacy was the second. She was very nervous about this, you know, not sure because there's so much more in a financial software that the schools need than what a typical county finance needs. But they've worked well with her and she, she probably would be very willing to come and speak on, you know, how the dealings have been with her too. She has a very small staff, we have to keep that in mind too. But I will say when, when, when the business practices meetings happened at the very beginning of the implementation. The Treasurer and the Commissioner were not here at the time. We had the older, you know, the previous Commissioner, the previous Treasurer. So then what we did was when the business practices, we had to review them again with the new officers. But you guys got to keep in mind that they had just got here. So it was hard for them to say, this is how Bright works and this is what I need to see from Edmunds. So that's kind of the situation where we're, we're dealing with some effects of that too, that they just, like the, the DMV, you know, okay, this is how this is working. How is this going to work for us and the other way? It, it is, we're having growing pains with new officers, definitely. So, and Edmunds is trying to meet those challenges.
And we quibble with that sentiment might be that it sounds like we're then reinventing the wheel. I mean, Commissioners of Revenues, Treasurers, they have constitutionally defined jobs. And I don't know why it would be so vastly different from one county to another.
The penalties and interest, how we do it is, might be different than the way Essex does it as far as. And that's one of the things that Mary Sue's having an issue with, that she mentioned to Edmunds on Friday. Is that she has to manually process interest and penalties and that's something they're working on. But just the way we do things, that, you know, what is the rate of the interest and penalty is different from, you know, a different county. It, it was just the basic things. And honestly, if you asked if we picked another county that used Bright. And I said, this is how we use it, or even the Treasurer and the Commissioner, they're going to say to us, that's not how we use Bright. Bright is custom, was custom made to each county. And this is exactly what we're getting into with Edmunds. It's custom made, yes, they have the basic, you know, the real estate, personal property and all that. But there's different ways of how each county does things.
I guess, I, I just, my, my thing is if, if I was a vendor and I was trying to, you know, grow a software business and I don't know what their business model is. I don't even know how long they've been around, but if I had the amount of. Negative commentary being heaped upon me as is happening here, I would be running to explain myself and to fix the problem. I would be sprinting.
And they were.
So I, I haven't heard a word from them.
Oh, well, the first conversation we had was Friday and we, the Treasurer, Commissioner, County Administrator, Deputy. Traps Wolf, everyone was on the phone in the meeting, talking about things. And I think we're doing a follow-up to that too, so yeah. And building and planning use it, they've had their own little things, but again, you can't, I think, I think even Karina went to Essex. And, and they sat and they, they did a training with them. Oh, okay.
But it's, my, well, I've made my statement clear, I, I, all I'm doing is just restating my own point. I, I want to, I want to meet with them as the board and have an opportunity to hear from them.
Yeah, I understand.
Because we're just getting heat, you know, I mean.
But the, the application that the Commissioner of Revenue, Revenue uses out of this system and the Treasurer. That's going to be different than the total application that you use. So. I, I just know that the previous constitutional officers both told me that it was going to be problems, whether.
How, how they knew that, I, I would argue that point.
That, that's why I asked the question about the, the year twenty nineteen, because.
It was actually twenty twenty.
Yeah, January of twenty twenty, right after we were sworn in. The then County Administrator, I asked about it and she, she said, well, why don't you ask? And I did ask and they had knowledge of it from where, I don't know, I was pretty green then, I guess I still am. But I know that their application has to be somewhat different than finance, the way that they're using it.
Well, right, but absent a crystal ball, I don't know how to have that knowledge because it doesn't sound like this system's being very broadly used.
Well, at that time, at that time, the then Commissioner of Revenue told me that Essex was using it then. That's why I asked Ms. Funkhauser, but she says that they didn't go online until this past October or so, you know, I don't know. That's just what I was.
I know, I know, but that, I mean, that part's water under the bridge.
Yeah, yeah, we need to get it fixed.
We've got to move forward.
There's no, there's no going back, it needs to be fixed and we just need to figure out the best way.
And honestly, it, Edmunds is cost effective for this county. The other softwares that are out there, then the price tags on those were outrageous and it was.
Yeah, we've also.
Models that we had no use for and it, and they are, they're collecting, Edmunds is collecting counties throughout the state. We're probably one of the younger counties that they picked up. Bright is, you know, just kind of dwindling. With our situation to utilize Bright, we have an IBM server. And to replace that, we're talking probably about twelve grand just for an IBM server, so that's. And honestly, the fees that we're paying for maintenance, tech support, all that is about half is what, of what we were paying to Bright also. And we have better tech support.
Let's just figure out the most effective way to get Edmunds moving and supporting us.
Sounds good.
So.
She was mentioning, she sort of hit on a segue. You were saying that the lady from finance and the schools, it's only two school systems that use Edmunds, that's what I wanted to hit too.
Yeah, that's correct.
And how many finance departments are on it? We and how many others?
No, and that, most of the finance departments throughout the state of the, that are using Edmunds, yeah.
Oh, it's just the.
Usually if they're going, if the county goes with Edmunds, they, it's the whole county.
Okay, so a lot of finance.
So like Westmoreland County is still using Bright. Yeah, is, they've switched to Edmunds.
It's only two school systems, but a lot of the finance departments, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, please continue.
All righty.
I like your graphic. I like your graphic.
Finished doing her notes? She's going to pull up my slide for me. So tonight I will review with you the overall results of the fiscal year 2021 and requests received from departments for capital needs in fiscal year 2023. Please note, the final audit of figures are still pending, waiting on the final bank reconciliation. In FY 2021, the overall general fund budget was $25,674,511. The budgeted expenditures included 51% of King William County operational funding, 6% King William County capital and debt service, and 43% King William County public schools. I guess, do you want me to ask the questions while we go through it or just finish it?
Just go ahead.
Okay.
We'll, we'll let her up as much as she's.
That sounds good. Okay, to support the expenditures, 80% of the general fund revenue funds, school and county. These revenues include property taxes, local sales tax, fee poll, food and beverage tax, motor vehicles license, consumer utility tax, and utilities gross receipts. 20% of the revenue support county expenditures. These revenues include comp board reimbursement, state and federal aid, building and zoning permit fee, sheriff and Commonwealth attorney fee, local revenue agreement, bank interest, and property rental revenues. The real estate property tax rate has remained at 86 cents per 100 since calendar year 2019. The growth of this county reflects 6% increase in revenues collected from 2019. The schools portion of the 86 cents per 100 tax rate has also remained the same since calendar year 2019. Funding from county to schools has increased 6% from 19 to 22. Based on the financial policies that have been established, the county continues to maintain an unassigned fund balance in the amount of 20%, approximately two to three months of general fund expenditures and outflows at the end of each fiscal year.
Just to help me understand, how, how does that fund increase?
The unassigned fund balance increases based on our revenues exceeding our expenditures each year.
Okay.
But when this was done, is it a point when we can count on it being around 80? You know what I mean? Because we do have expenditures that come out and it does go up and down, right?
Yeah, I mean, yes, it does. It, it, there's, this is an overall, this is what it ended the year with. 20% of the FY 22 budget is equal to 5.6. The unassigned fund balance represents assets that are available to appropriate for future purposes. The county could potentially use a portion of the unassigned fund balance to pay the future capital project.
HVAC and water towers and.
School, what about the, the money that we're probably going to have to bond for the improvements, maintenance improvements with the school? That's not, that's, that's not, we can't use any of those.
Um, so what we, what we want to do this year for 23 budget is actually present to the board a, a capital improvement plan for both schools and county. And when you receive the, the plan, you'll actually see the source fundings that we're, that we're meeting to talk about to see, okay, where can we fund these, these requests?
So we can use some of this?
Not of the unassigned. Because then we'd be getting into the split levy, but we can use the split levy restricted that we do the reconciliation each year to determine that if there wasn't excess. So say that our revenues and expenditures exceeded, the expenditure, revenues exceeded our expenditures for last year. And then we have the reconciliation that we do with the schools that says, well, of our revenues, we could have given the schools this amount because we took more than what we had appropriated. So that amount then goes over into the split levy restricted for the schools. And that will not be part of our unassigned fund balance then.
Okay.
Information is provided each year with our cap. This information is provided each year with our caper. The county continues to have a stable population growth 7% over 10 years. The county unemployment rate is at 2.4% and FY 20, the unemployment rate was at 5.2, which was double the amount from 2019 at 2.6. Local sales tax revenues have increased 26% over the past three fiscal years. So, and you know, as you can see, COVID affected our unemployment rate, but really didn't affect our sales tax. Oh, sorry, back away for debt service. The debt service is broken out by county, utilities and schools. This information is most up to date. And when I say most up to date, it includes the 2022 purchase of the medic and the engine and the three interceptor vehicles for the sheriff's office. In the fall of 2021, the deputy county administrator and myself reviewed our debt ratio with that important company to ensure the county is adhering to our debt service financial policy. And the next slide is our last slide. It outlines some of the capital needs that have been brought forward from the different departments. Replacement of a courthouse security system. The current system was installed in 2004 and in need of replacing. And you have the fire and EMS SCBA necessary for entry into burning buildings and hazmat environments. Equipment needs replaced due to out of date, out of service and out of compliance.
That you asked for a break.
Yeah. Outdoor speaker production system at the park complex, park complex to provide quality special events for music and movie programs. Their current equipment is not sufficient for outdoor use. The final phase of the carpet replacement in county admin. Continue to fund major projects for general upkeep of facilities such as roofing, HVAC and general repair. The juvenile building renovation, complete renovation to the building is needed to make the best use of the space. Emergency battery backup power at the courthouse, replacement of batteries that have reached the end of lifespan and cannot be relied upon in an emergency. Key card lock system for administration building. Generator for regional animal shelter. Information technology includes cloud-based phone system, firewall for security monitoring, safe for our server, and switches to animal shelter and station one for better connectivity to county network and wifi. The VISA conventions, yeah, convenient center solution. Acquiring a property and setting up a new VISA convenient center instead of the one by the high school. And the vehicle replacement program replacement cycle. We're currently reviewing the entire listing of county vehicles, age and mileage, and hope to develop a replacement schedule. And that will be part of the plan.
Do we have an estimated dollar amount on any of these?
Um. Not right offhand. I would not, I would not want to actually start throwing numbers at you.
We'll have estimates.
Yes, yes. And a lot of these things, we're still working on quotes. These are things that they have, you know, mentioned that, hey, these are things I need you guys to be thinking about.
Are the battery replacements at the courthouse a part of the generator?
No, are they?
So.
Oh, okay. Here's your gun.
They were assessed this past year.
And those generator over there is getting older and it doesn't get in quite this clear. So we're in a courthouse a little bit in the dark. It's just, well, like she said, 2004 and everything over there pretty much.
Okay, any other questions? Anything else you'd like to share?
That's all I have for you.
Very good. Looking forward to the budget discussions. Thank you. Big sale. Okay, 10C authorizing the county attorney to petition the court for special election. Mr. Hudgens.
Good evening, gentlemen. This has already been discussed by the board and as we discussed before, it was your intent to hold a special election for the circuit court clerk on the November 8th general election date as long as the judge was in agreement with that. He has since issued an order for the interim to maintain the office until that time. And so I'm asking you now to consider asking our county attorney to petition the court for a special election on November 8th.
Do, do we also, what about school board?
They're going to do their own.
Do they have actually?
The school board's already taken care of their own.
Yes.
Okay. Look at that.
So will they require a November election? Are they doing somewhere to?
We're hoping. Yes, it's a November rule, yeah.
Okay. Any, just require a motion?
It requires a motion.
So move.
So.
Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Hudgens. Please remain standing. Okay. Marijuana retail referendum.
Well, um, I'm bringing this to you now because when I was first putting it together, we had a different administration in the state and things were moving forward to the only time that we could have a referendum on prohibition of marijuana retail stores in the county would have to take place this year. That issue is, is currently being looked at by the general assembly and a lot of the details surrounding this are currently being looked, looked at. But originally marijuana legalization was passed this past year, but retail stores were pushed back until 2024. If a locality wanted to have a referendum on prohibiting, prohibition of retail stores in that locality, they would have to have that referendum take place between July of this year and December of this year. And that is why I bring it to your attention.
So if we wanted that the November election would be the idea?
Correct. We don't have to take action on this until August. Thought it was a good time to discuss other things going on the ballot.
It, it's my understanding that if we take no action at all, it will become, it will be.
Correct. If we take no action, then marijuana retail stores are allowed and we would never be able to hold another referendum on the issue.
I think you can, the way I read it, after four years, you can, you can bring it forward again.
That's only if we.
If it, if it's a no.
Only if it's a no to prohibition.
Right. And, and after that, say it's a no, say it's a no. And then it is brought forward again. That would be the total end of, you would never have another option, correct?
Say that again.
If, if, if it's a no vote, the statute allows you to, to bring it forward again in four years. If in four years it's voted down, it's no other option, correct?
You believe that's correct?
Yeah.
That's the same in the general assembly.
If the general assembly doesn't change things. And right now they're discussing whether or not to move retail stores or sales up from 2024 to 23. There's also some legislation being proposed to possibly change whether or not a county is allowed by, or when a county would be allowed by referendum to make up their mind.
Gentlemen, I'd like to see a little more investigation into potential revenue, potential ramifications, what other counties are going to do. And for example, we're going to bring it up in the PDC meeting Wednesday night. What our six fellow counties are doing or intention, intending to do. So I would, I would like to see this table this evening until we can get a little more information under our belt as well as wait for the legislative activity to kind of either end up or give us a better understanding of what the, the latest governor and legislature is looking at.
I'm, I'm fine with that. However, I think if bottom line, unless somebody changes my mind, I would leave it up to people on reference, where I, where I would be. And let them hopefully answer and it won't be brought up right immediately. Like I've seen the other jurisdictions, they can write behind it, but another referendum for the same thing. I don't know how they're doing that, but anyway, I, I think it ought to be voted on by the people that.
All right. Well, again.
Right, well, yeah, I, I, I think this probably bears longer discussion in a work session and probably some more input from other stakeholders. Kamala's attorney, sheriff, certainly. No, no input from Kamala's. Anyways, just gather some opinions on this from people who, who have opinions on it. And then we can decide how we want to move forward and what our options are after July 1st. That's one, well, we'll know before that, but you know.
Yes.
What is the cutoff?
August, mid-August, August 18th.
To get a referendum.
To have that court order in.
My, my July 10th, the one day was only apropos to when legislation takes effect. We'll know well in advance of that of what, what decisions are made this year.
So any recommendations or suggestions as to when we readdress? Would 30 days be enough for staff to develop?
30 days isn't going to be enough for the general assembly to figure out what they're doing.
Well, it is what it is.
I would say we take it up after the budget's adopted. Probably not, not before that, that we're not going to have.
Is that a circuit court order?
I believe so.
Yeah, the order, the circuit court, circuit court would have to order for the special election, for the referendum.
Okay, okay.
So.
Motion to table.
I don't even think there's an action out of the table, really.
There's not?
Etymology at this point.
We draw?
That's just pretended to happen.
I didn't hear you.
All right. Mr. County Administrator Percy C. Ashcraft.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. When I prepare, when we prepare the packet, I always place a preliminary report in the packet for you to have. And then Ms. Branch has put one in front of you tonight as an updated version and you'll find the changes that are in the highlighted area. I won't cover everything in the report. I think you can digest it at your pleasure, but I do want to make note that the districting advisory committee, you know, that meeting was canceled because of weather. It's been moved to January 27th, the one o'clock. That's the first, the first meeting of that group.
And are they doing their live?
Zoom meeting in person.
Oh, it's in Zoom, yeah.
Well, no, they're, they were.
It's in person, but we will be broadcasting it via Zoom. And if we have any input from the members that they would like to be here via Zoom, there's no problem with that.
And it'll be here?
Yes.
Okay.
Further down in the, in the updates, we've been requesting from members of the board if they have any comments on the acceptable use policy for computers and, and other devices that we use. And we'll be bringing that to you in the work session on February the 14th. And ultimately, at some future day, we'll be asking the board to consider adopting that policy, but not on February the 14th. We want to gather your thoughts one last time. But if you have anything that you want to contribute to the draft, we would encourage you to do that.
Kamala's attorney reviewed it?
Not yet. We haven't got to that point yet. I hope we're still, still drafting.
Mr. Ashcraft, just to explain what the purpose of this document policy is.
It's, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's security. Obviously, our employees in, in interacting and using the devices, there should be guidelines in which they can use it. Common sense tells you it should be for business purposes, but sometimes employees take liberties. They may do their online banking. They may do online shopping. There's other, there, there's just other distractions during the course of a day. And we want to narrow it down that it's for business purposes. and we want to narrow it down that it's for business purposes. Then there's also other, other language that, uh, that goes into, uh, the problem with security and, and the potential for hacking and, uh, and, and other things. So, we just feel like it's time to put a policy in place. I think cybersecurity is always going to be something that we're going to be addressing. We'll probably bring you other, other details of that as we move forward. But this is something that our, our people can take care of themselves in-house and lessen the threat of, uh, of viruses and other things that they come, they come their way.
We've all heard of the ransomware attacks, so we don't want to be one of those.
For, for misuse of, of it, is it, are we gonna have disciplinary action or are we gonna work on that?
We would work towards that. Some folks may not understand it. Obviously they'll have to sign a document that they got the, that they have the policy, but people make mistakes, honest mistakes and, uh, we would not, uh, want to levy too hard a discipline unless they were habitual misusers of, of the policy and then we would have to address it. But I think everybody, uh, the department heads have seen this now for almost a month and we have again sent it out to the members of the board and, uh, we think we're refining it to where it should be, uh, it should be acceptable. Want to, uh, with the sheriff here, the attorney general was approved the lease for the state police tower and that, uh, really opens the door for us to, uh, move forward quickly now with the, uh, new public safety radio project. You know, we were a little bit fearful that a new attorney general will take in office. It may delay that, but I'm not sure if the previous attorney general did it or, or whether the new one, but anyway, it didn't get lost in the, uh, in the shuffle, so, that was a big holdup for, uh, for what we were hoping for a speedy implementation. So I believe there's still one, uh, online for this summer if all the pieces fall into place. So congratulations to the sheriff and everybody else that had a, had a hand in getting, uh, in getting that done because that is a big, uh, that was a big obstacle. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna let you talk about it at the appropriate time. The, uh, the meeting today was, uh, was broadband, if you want to mention. We can do that one later.
We held what was, I guess, considered the kickoff meeting with the DHCD body grant folks in Richmond. It was via Zoom, so it was, it was going to be an in-person, but we decided, or they decided that maximum, uh, safety. Mr. Hudgens was also on it. We, uh, we have contracts to negotiate. We were given a draft, I believe. I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but shortly thereafter, but we'll start that process. It's, it's rather complex and elaborate, but we have a good partner with all points to help us along the path. They've got at least three to four other contracts, other counties that they're supporting with the body grant, so it's very encouraging. Mr. Hudgens, you'd like to offer anything?
It was, uh, just a confidence building that they seem to know what they're doing and, uh, they've got templates for everything that they've gone through this process before, not just this year, but in previous years. So they know what the, it's all points does what the HCD is looking for and is gonna be able to guide us, I think, pretty well.
And we, just to, sir, we have, uh, we have ninety days to get this going.
We do.
We hope to accelerate and beat that, but ninety days and then things will start happening for, for, uh, news, news outlets.
We'll continue to keep everyone updated because I think it's one of the, obviously one of the more important matters in this county right now is when is it gonna start or where does it want to go first?
I have a question real quick. Mr. Chairman, did we get clarity on the question of dots last time?
We haven't, we talked a little bit today. Some of the dots are related to RDOs.
Right.
All points did win an RDO grant. We're still getting, uh, a little clarification. They've been rather busy, as you can imagine, they're getting, getting the counties on board and online. So we'll, we'll continue to press that. We, just another point, we do have a telecon, a Zoom session with Breeze Line on Friday afternoon, I believe, to clarify, uh, some things that they've got going with their RDO grant. We helped to know more about who's doing what by then. Not sure what else we can talk about at this point.
No, I think that meeting.
Yeah, we still need clarification.
Okay.
If I can share a positive software statement, I think we all could use one. Our human resources director, uh, implemented the software of Interga. And one of the features of that is to maximize, uh, the potential of, of increasing your hiring pool, the application process and running it very smoothly and giving, uh, all the applicants all the information they need and, and the opportunity to, uh, to exchange information. Uh, that's now being implemented and it's working. And it should certainly help recruitment and, uh, and filling the vacant positions much more quickly than, uh, maybe what it doesn't mean we still won't use the traditional means, but it is another measure for us to, uh, to move forward with. So, Ms. McIntyre's done a good job in, uh, in shepherding that. Kudos to her. The animal shelter has been the recipient of, uh, of Betty White, uh, passing. As you know, uh, she made a challenge to everyone that, uh, to raise money for animal shelters. And up to this date, we've raised fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, as a result, everybody had asked to contribute five dollars, uh, to their local animal shelter. So, uh, that's a lot of five dollar donations, so fifteen hundred dollars is pretty, uh, significant. And then on top of that, the, uh, animal control, uh, director received a community foundation, uh, for Greater Richmond grant for a thousand dollars. So she continues to, uh, press forward with raising private, private funds as well as what she received from, uh, from the county and, uh, and King and Queen. And finally, Mr. Chairman, uh, with COVID, we continue to do what we've been doing. Uh, we, we mask up, uh, when we deal with the public. We're being very cautious. Uh, the number of cases in the county are going down gradually. Since the numbers that I gave to you earlier were down to twenty seven cases a day now over a seven-day period. Excuse me, rather than forty where it was, uh, about two weeks ago. We are over thirty-two hundred cases of COVID since we started in February of, uh, of twenty twenty. But we remain constant and I, this does, continues to remain constant that our hospitalization is at eighty and our passing, uh, our twenty-seven individual, uh, in the county. You know, we're, uh, we're watching all of our peers, certainly what's going on in the schools, what's, what's going on, uh, it with state employees and, and such, but it seems to be working. The public's cooperating and, uh, I think everybody is staying as safe, uh, as they can, uh, in that regard.
Mr. Andrew, do you have a, a point in mind where we could perhaps relax the mask and make it optional inside the building? Is there a percentage point in your mind where we could maybe allow?
What, uh, what, what benchmark they've been using is whether you're a high, uh, impact, uh, for, for, for the disease. And last week, the whole state was. It wasn't any part of the state that, that was not in, in high transmission. So if we could get out of that, then I think we would be free to probably, uh, move forward. But until we do, uh, again, it's just a precautionary measure to, uh, to try to limit, uh, exposure.
And today was the first day for the, the schools to make the, have the option to not wear a mask.
What did King William do?
Understand that went fairly well, option. Understand it went fairly well. Dr. White was still here, but.
Yeah, he, he chatted with me a little bit ago about that and he said, it went as well as he thought it could. You know, they have a lot of, they have a lot of ways to, to have to deal with that. Their school buses, you know, their classrooms, uh, they, you know, they have, uh, P classes. I mean, there's just a lot of things that they have to, to navigate.
Buses are still required by federal law, correct?
That's correct. That's right.
And West Point also went to option.
Okay. Good, so. Mr. Chairman, I complete my report this evening unless any members have any questions.
Any questions, comments?
When I just add a notification on your January, you forgot to reschedule the, uh, planning commission meeting too. That was canceled on the twentieth and rescheduled for the twenty-seventh at seven PM here.
For the bylaws?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much for calling that card, Jim.
Mr. Chair, maybe I was the only one who missed it, but what happened to eight?
Eight D? It was under consent?
But I mean, we, we weren't doing a presentation.
No, no, they, they did not request that. They just, they just wanted the letter to, uh, as part of.
I just wondered generally you did today.
Sure. Yeah, they, they did not request.
Having here, of course, but, uh, they, uh, we would have loved to have had him here, but he opted to.
That's correct.
Just to accept the letter.
Yeah.
We can mention, can we mention in the public, uh?
Oh, sure. I think so.
If you wouldn't mind, sir.
I think it is in the public, uh.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
Officially.
I, I can do it if you'd like. Um, you know, we added resolution twenty-two oh nine, uh, which was honoring Reverend Tally from Third Union Baptist Church, uh, for fifty years of pastoral service at Third Union Church. Those of us that know Reverend Tally well, uh, know what an asset he is to, uh, to that church, to the Pumonkey Baptist Association and, and everywhere he goes. He actually doesn't live in King William County, but you'd never know it. Yeah, he's, he's outstanding gentleman, leads an outstanding congregation in our community. So congratulations to him.
What fascinated me about that, uh, was that the church was established in eighteen sixty-nine and, and has had only six pastors since the time. That's incredible.
Yes, it is. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're into supervisors' comments. Uh, let's go, Mr. Gardner, left to right here.
Congratulations to the King William High School football team. You're here. I also like to remind everybody, May first is the last day for, to get a high mileage reduction. It's a lot of chat on, uh, vehicle reduction. It's a lot of chat on Facebook about that, so I just thought I would mention that. I'm glad all the, was it, was that a nice looking group of people that came here? The cheerleaders, the football players.
Not as good as seventy-four and seventy-five.
We look a whole lot better then than we do now, I'll give you that.
He's writing all that down.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine. I can't hide that. I am what I am. Yeah, it was a, a group of people here that, uh, you know, I just can't say how happy I am for those, those young men. Like to thank everybody for coming. And, uh, same thing goes, uh, COVID is COVID. I heard today that, uh, one of my very good friends had COVID, his wife had COVID, his daughter got COVID. Two people that I know, uh, just got out of the hospital. All of them were fully vaccinated. So, uh, everybody knows that I'm careful. I guess it's your own choice, but, you know, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Ray, for coming again. I saw you had a huge crowd and all the guys are here. It was good to see them. Congratulations to the team, the coaches, the cheerleaders, the, everybody, so. It was a good group. I couldn't believe the three of y'all here on the board are alumni of King William. Let's, congratulations to y'all too, so. Thanks for staff for doing everything they did. Like I said, we have issues that come up, but that's always gonna happen. We can work through some of these things and finally get some of this stuff out of the way and get a good plan book, so we need that. And thanks for coming. It didn't look like we had too many people on Zoom. Guess that's dying away.
How many, how many folks are actually on Zoom?
That's not bad.
Yeah. Mr. Moskowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so earlier tonight, I just wanted to clarify because, um, I let my frustration out a little bit of the software issue and I wanted to be clear that I am not upset with anybody on our staff about Edmonds. I am upset with the vendor right now. They're the ones I want answers from. So, um, if, uh, if anybody took that, me voicing my frustration to be frustrated with staff, that is not the case. Uh, just wanted to make that clear. Uh, I mentioned earlier tonight, although we may have missed it in the, uh, in the noise of the, the youths here, that Ms. Hill, Etta Hill, who, uh, sat for many years, uh, right about behind where Matt's sitting right now, um, with her husband Lawrence, who passed away a couple of years ago, passed away rather suddenly, um, just a few weeks ago. She was a nurse practitioner, um, practiced at TPMG West Point with doctors Hosfield, father and son, for many, many years. Treated lots and lots and lots of people in this county, um, was just an outstanding woman, great person to know. And her son Howard, uh, is a coach on the football team. He's not here tonight because he's reffing the, uh, varsity basketball game at the high school. Uh, just a really great family with deep roots in the county and, and I'm very sad that, to, you know, that she's no longer with us. But, but she was an amazing woman and worth remembering and honoring. Congrats again to the Cavaliers. Um, if, if I haven't, if you haven't heard me say it before, I was on the two thousand unit one, but it was just a freshman. I was, I was just a freshman call-up, so they would just wail on me all week long and then use that saved up energy to, uh, to roll over whoever was playing us the next week. But I got my state championship ring, which is something, obviously we beat Heath Miller in that state championship game. He got two Super Bowl rings, but I still think I've got the better one. Some of you know, I've already talked to some of you about it, but my family and I were in a, we're in a fairly serious car accident this past weekend and a lot of you have, uh, reached out to check on us. Fortunately, we're, we're all okay. But thanks to, to those of you that did, uh, reach out and, and check on us. Uh, and then just one final note on a, on a personal note, um, the December meeting that I, that I missed in order to be with my wife on her birthday, uh, wrapped up ten years of service for me at the sport. And, uh, man, I've, I've seen some stuff in a decade and certainly these last, uh, two years and, and that last term that I just wrapped up, this chairman being held mostly outside of this building. I think when all of us met up in April to receive our first dose of the vaccine, it was the first time we had seen each other face to face in a year in that entire time. So, um, you know, it just reflecting on it, on a decade of service here, uh, you know, I'm, I'm grateful to, to have the opportunity to serve this county and grateful for the people, uh, for their faith in me to, uh, to serve this office effectively in, uh, the next two years of this term. I think we are set up to do some great things, so I'm looking forward to it. So thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Uh, we'll see you, uh, next time we are together. Safe travels.
And Mr. Hudgens.
Don't worry. Stephen, uh, sort of shocked me earlier. I thought he was gonna say he was shocked that three of them make crazy plays.
It was a struggle. It was a struggle.
The class of a four has no comment. We're millennials. We keep our heads down.
Okay. On a serious note, uh, I was sitting here, well, standing there with all the folks when we had the football team and I wondered just how many and what directions are they going in, you know, what colleges, what, you know, how many will we see in the N F A, you know?
At least, I would say at least one.
Very well. And, and those odds are tremendous to make that, so one is a great one. On another note, uh, my sister did get out of the hospital. Her family is things to be clear of COVID now and getting along. The other three are, get okay. She, she had the roughest time. It's when she finally got out. She's still on oxygen for a little bit, but. And I will add that neither one of them were vaccinated. Upset me tremendously and I have expressed that firmly. That's another, but it's my sister. But, uh, thank everybody for coming. I hope we're looking forward to a good, yeah, it's gonna be tight. It, it's not gonna be an easy one. And, and discussions already being, uh, thought about, uh, uh, what kind of rate cut we can do. I just don't see it this year. I may be wrong, but, and we'll know that down the road, but, uh, I think it's gonna be a tough year. Anyway, thank y'all again for coming and, uh, be on the way.
Thank you. Well, to wrap it up, I just want to, something we tried diligently to get Ms. Patricia Norman in here for a resolution or something, congratulating her in her service as clerk of the circuit court. She, uh, she, uh, adamantly refused to, uh, allow us to do that, but I would like to publicly acknowledge her service to this county. She's got a lot of things done, uh, preserving records and, and running that office. You can go in there and it, it, it boggles my mind how people can go in there and try to find something. She would take you right to it. So again, for Ms. Patricia Norman, thank you for your dedicated service to the King William County.
And Mr. Chair, I will tell the board, I did express that to her, uh, from the board, from all of us, and I'm sure every one of you meant the same thing. And she broke down crying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I went by and uh, when I picked my packet up, yeah, she was, she was in tears then. And she will be missed.
I'm sure Ms. Glazberg will, will be able to run that shop. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. If I could uh, entertain a motion to move into closed meeting?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we move, uh, convene in closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia to consider a personal matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions, and to consider the salaries of specific public employees seconded.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Ms. Branch?
Hi.
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 Hi. We're moving to closed session, we'll be back.
Motion to reconvene in open session, Mr. Chairman.
We need the certification.
No, 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 we gotta do this first.
I'm sorry, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move SR one.
Discussion, properly.
Yeah.
Properly motions, seconded, we're good? Okay, I'm getting these rules straightened out here. Okay, uh.
Oh, now we gotta vote.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you were, it's a discussion, I was like, no, no, discussion, we gotta vote.
Okay, Ms. Branch.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. And uh, someone like to make a motion to pass Resolution twenty-two dash zero seven R dash two. Committee redistricting advisory committee, properly motioned and seconded, any discussion, Ms. Branch?
Hi.
Hi. Uh.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, regulations is there.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Branch.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
The first time I've been able to make a motion adjourned in a year, and you took it from me.